Comprehensive education in architectural studies for global learners. And increasingly, we actually are all over the world. And our various events that we do, we sometimes have people from up to fifty-three different countries all connecting together. So it really is a global program. Now, what I wanted to do first is just go around and introduce the faculty and staff. And I'd like to start with the staff because some of them you'll probably be talking with quite a bit. So Laura, could I ask you to introduce yourself, please? And if you don't mind, when you introduce yourselves, could you turn on your video as well so everybody can see you? Or yeah, maybe I'll stop sharing so everybody can really see.
Hi, I'm Laura Mahadon. I'm the student support and advising specialist for the R A I C Center for Architecture. So I heard I heard Marklin talking earlier. I think I've talked to you over the phone quite a few times. Nice to hear your voice in on this.
Yeah, the annoying question like every question like question.
No, not at all. No, that's what I'm here for. So probably if you call or email in, I'll probably be your first point of contact.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Carol.
Yes, I'm Carol Mason, and I was hired on in two thousand and ten to implement the Bachelor of Science Architecture Program in collaboration with the Royal Architect Institute of Canada. And so I've been here now for over ten years. And it's just wonderful to see how many new students we have from all of the globe that are interested in our Bachelor of Science Architecture Program. And I see Salam just signed on. So hello, Salam. She's one of our first grads. And so Salam came on today just to give you guys a little bit of mentorship program. Before, once you complete your program, if you're interested in going on to receive a master's degree in architecture, she has some excellent experiences to share with you. And so thank you, thank you for coming today. And I'm really excited about our engagement session with the students.
Thank you, Carol. And now I'll hand it over to Veronica. Veronica is one of our faculty members.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Veronica Madonna, and I'm an architect and assistant professor with the R A I C Center for Architecture. I'm located in Toronto, so if you're ever in the area, do reach out. I teach the virtual studios as well as coordinate the architectural professional practice courses. So if you take any of those, you will likely be in contact with me at some point.
Thank you, Veronica. Over to you, Henry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Henry Tsang. I'm also an architect and assistant professor at the R A C Center for Architecture. I joined the R A C Center two years ago. I also teach studios and some of the courses in the technical and theory stream. So nice to meet you all. I'm based in Calgary, so if you're in town, let me know.
Okay, thank you, Henry. And then our other, the other faculty member is Trevor Butler. And unfortunately, he can't be with us today. So now I'm going to move to the tutors and academic experts. And let's see, I'm not sure I'm going to get this in alphabetical order, but let's, let's start with Lenore.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lenore Hietkamp. I'm the academic expert for the architectural history, history in architecture, no ideas. I forgot the name of the course. I never look at the name of the course. Arc three hundred ideas and the history of architecture, I think, anyway. Oh, now I'm all embarrassed. What's the name of my course? Anyway, hello, everybody. I'm gonna stop talking now.
Okay, well, thank you, Lenore. Kristin, over to you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristin Kornienko, and I've been a part of the architecture program at AU for over five years now. I teach five of the theory and design courses. I'm also part of a community-based art and design company in South Africa, which is, I came here fourteen years ago on a Fulbright grant, and then I stayed here and did my PhD. And it's on community housing and social housing and upgrading the shack communities here. And so I've been here for the last three months working on that and as well as continuing my teaching. So nice to meet everyone.
Thank you, Kristin. And let's see, Barry.
Hey, everyone. I'm Barry McGreal. I'm an architectural historian, and I'm living in Richmond, British Columbia, in the lower mainland. And I'm coming to from the unceded and ancestral territories of the Stolo and Quandlin people where I am a guest. And I teach three courses, the Canadian Architectural History Course, the Theory Course, Architecture in Theory, as well as one of the applied APST two thirty courses on environmental sustainability.
Thank you, Barry. And I see that Shane has joined us. Shane, could you introduce yourself?
My name is Shane Lapdis. I'm an academic expert for APST two forty, the Structures course, and also occasionally teach some of the design studios. I'm based in Toronto and an architect who established my firm two years ago.
Thank you, Shane. David Murray.
Hello, everyone. I'm in, I'm an architect here in Edmonton. I started, I am a tutor for a professional practice six four five. And I think I was the first tutor in the, in the program. So it's two thousand and ten we started, two thousand and eleven, something like that. So it's great to see everyone. I'm getting to meet all the faculty as well because we don't get together all that often, but it's great to see your faces.
Thank you, David. We've got a couple of special guests, but before I introduce them, is there anybody on the faculties or staff that I've forgotten? Well, that's good. So I know one of the things that is a great deal of interest to everybody is what, what, what do you do if you get a Bachelor of Science of Architecture with us? Can you go on to a master's program? And we're very fortunate today to have two people who've done exactly that. I'm going to introduce them both, but I'm going to ask Salam actually to introduce herself first and then Brendan.
Hi, everyone. I am Salam, and I graduated from the Bachelor of Science in Architecture in two thousand and nineteen. And now I'm doing my Master's of Architecture in Germany. Actually, I have one semester left, which will start tomorrow. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Salam, and thank you for joining us. Brendan, over to you.
Hi, good to see you guys. Good to see you, Salam. Germany, that's, that's far away. It's crazy for you, though. Yeah, I'm Brendan. I graduated two thousand and nineteen as well, but I think it was, yeah, a little bit after Salam, given like the stagger start times we can have with the program. I'm doing a master's at the University of Calgary in my second year. And I have one year to go, or yeah, it's about one year to go. And so that should wrap up sometime April next year. Yeah, thanks for having me here.
Well, no, it's great that you guys could join us because I know people will probably have a lot of questions for you. A couple of the things that I wanted to do as we jump into it is to share some resources that will help all of you as you're moving through your, your studies. So again, I'm going to go back and share my screen. And basically, what I'm suggesting is that one of the best things to do it, hopefully you can see our R A I C Center for Architecture website. Can I just check to see if everybody's got that?
Yes.
Wonderful. So there's all these things here on this one homepage that you can access. And all of them are kind of important, but the first important one is, is to follow us over here on the right-hand side, our Instagram account. The reason I'm suggesting that is because when we're, we're not doing these kinds of meetings, this is the first one. We do hope to do more. This is the best place to find out what's going on. So you can see the, the Town Hall ad, but there's also, when there's a scholarship coming due, then that's available. When there's a lecture going on, then that's available. So these things are extremely important. And if you can, please try and check them out. Now, the other thing, though, I wanted to share with you because this will be very valuable to you is we have a whole set of publications which are basically free, free, open educational resources for everybody. And they range from the technical and even some things about math and trigonometry that might be useful to you to a number of things about professional practice. And this is the one that I particularly wanted to share with you. We produced a pamphlet about becoming an architect in Canada. So you can go to the publications, download this, and you can find out all about what you need to do in order to become an architect in Canada. At the same time, though, we also have a student gallery where you can look at what other people have done in all of their different works. And so there's some really interesting things happening here. I see we need, really need to update it a little bit, but there's lots going on here. And you can check out by going into any of these projects to see what's happening. So for example, here's one that Hannah Gibson did in ADST four fifty. And so these things can be very useful to you. But you know, the other thing, though, that I wanted to share with you is that I'm going to stop sharing this one and share something else is that it is difficult to do an online program. And sometimes, you know, for whatever reasons, things don't go as well as they could. And that's, that's something that happens to everybody. And so I've asked the, some of our student help groups to give us a list of various things, resources that can help you. And I'm not going to go into detail of them all, but I just wanted to share with you that there are student awards, and that can be really, really useful. Knowing about our financial aid department and where to go and ask questions can be very, very valuable as well. But there's also a number of kind of health and wellness services ranging from home would health to counseling services. And here's one, Talk Campus. I don't even know as much about Talk Campus as I should, but it's where you can connect with people in a safe, effective, and encouraging environment to chat with post-secondary students from around the world. But one of the things that I'm going to share with you, and it's important to do that, is that the first line of defense is give a call to Laura and, and see, you know, if, if you're getting into some territory that, you know, things aren't going well, for example, and this happens to all of us, talk to Laura first, and then she can often direct you to the right place to go. I'm going to put these resources, perhaps I'm even going to try and include them in everybody's welcome letter that you get for every course. And we'll see if we can't make sure that everybody has access to all of these resources because I think almost, I think they're all free, and they're there for you to use as you need them. But I just a couple of updates which are very exciting. We would just been awarded a connection grant to work with thirteen different organizations in six different countries around the world to empower students, including you, to share, mobilize, and disseminate knowledge and research about regenerative design, about universal and inclusive design, and about equity in design and design education. We'll be rolling out more lectures and workshops and all sorts of things over the next year, and we'd encourage you to participate. Again, everything is free, and it's available for everybody. And in most cases, when we do a lecture, we also record it to YouTube. Oh, and I should pause here. We are recording today's activity as well, so I hope that doesn't bother anybody. Let me know if, if there's any reason why that might be problematic for you. And I just wanted to share with you that we are slowly, in fact, the Global Studio is going to help us a great deal in this if revising a number of our courses to make sure that they're more inclusive and diverse. And some of the courses range from Arc three hundred to Arc four twenty. But the other thing we're starting to do is plan the development of new courses for our Masters of Architecture. Again, the work from the Global Studio feed into this, but we're very excited about this. On our homepage, you can also find the external reviewer report. We had a program review last year, and one of the things that they said is really, you guys need to develop an accredited Master of Architecture program, and it will be unique. So we are actively looking and developing, looking into the development of that absolutely right now. But just, there's a couple of terms that you should understand as we get into this discussion. To become an architect in Canada, you can either go to an accredited Masters of Architecture program or you can get your education certified. Accredited means that the Canadian Architectural Certification Board, or C A C B, has come to your school, and they do so on a regular basis. They review everything. They pick into every course, and then they give it a stamp of approval or not. And if they give it a stamp of approval, then when you submit your credentials, nobody questions them because you went to, say, the University of Calgary. It's accredited. Therefore, you can move on to the next step in becoming a licensed architect. On the other hand, some programs, such as the syllabus, can be certified. But what that means is that you submit all of your credentials, you submit all of your transcripts, your course descriptions and everything again to the C A C B, and they review it on an individual basis. So if you came from, if you had a degree from the United States, it would be certified rather than accredited. So this is, there's two terms, and it's good to know the difference between them. You can become a licensed architect with an accredited degree or a certified degree, but they're both a little bit different. So in terms of what we're trying to do is we do want to become a accredited school of architecture, but this will take a few years. It will be non-coherent. It won't be semesters and schedule like a typical one. It'll be about sixty credits, and we hope actually to have a summer institute or a ten-day residency where people can come together and meet each other. And I hope I've kept that relatively brief. Here are some of the key, here are some of the key sort of websites, URLs, and email addresses. I'm always happy to hear from people, but with that, I'm going to stop sharing. This presentation will also be available in the publications and really just open it up to discussion. And feel free, if you want to ask Brendan a question or Salam a question, that's what we're here for. So this is our first one, so let's see how it goes. This is, I, I, I'm not sure what it is we do, but I always manage to silence all questions after I've given an update. So anybody? I'm gonna, well, if, oh.
Something up that the students in my course, quite a few of them, and you will, and it was actually in Arch three thirty, have brought up recently is the idea of having, setting up an hour a week or something where students could have a Zoom meeting. And there's been a lot of chat in our forum about that in the last little while. So I just gonna throw that out there and see what, you know, what sort of, what people think about that idea.
Thank you, Kristin. I saw that as well, and I think it's a great idea. What do, we'd be very interested in what people think.
I think that's a great idea because it helps students be accountable, I think, to like actually pursue the studying because if you don't meet with people, you kind of don't want to do anything. Okay. Because then you're not encouraged to like actually do something, I think.
All right.
I agree with, I think it'd be cool just to meet some other people in the program and have that social interaction with like-minded people because you don't get that social interaction, obviously, through this online. You're kind of home by yourself at times.
That's, that's a good point. Would, now, the, the idea that I was seeing in the discussion forum was just, it's almost like Henry, Henry Tsang had organized a virtual drop-in lounge in Zoom. Would that work for people? I mean, Henry, what's this? Maybe you could explain what the lounge is and how it worked.
Sure. So this was mainly for the design studio students because we found that many students wanted to work together, and some of them expressed interest in working together on design competitions. So we started this Zoom meeting room, I guess. We called the Architecture Lounge with no passwords. It's open twenty-four hours, and anyone can just hop in and just talk to someone anytime they wanted. It's still going on. We have the link in the Design Studio Padlet page. But I think if, if there's interest, we could do something like that for other courses as well. We found it very useful for students who wanted to work together in team projects so that they, they didn't have to set up their own Zoom account or anything like that. So, so we did have some students work on, on projects together with that.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Would that, if we had a kind of a twenty-four seven Zoom account where anybody could drop in and simply by making an arrangement with other students, would that, would that work or would you like it more structured?
I like that personally. It allows for people with different responsibilities to find different timings. I sent an email about this idea a while back as well and found, I just threw a thing out on Facebook. I threw a thing out on the chat saying, hey, any architecture students here? And about five of us just created a little mini chat and found that that was really helpful. I personally, I don't know about anybody else, but I'll get stuck at some point in like a collection or a particular assignment. And it's really nice to talk with people who are further ahead and have already completed it and said, no, you're, you're done, carry on. And just that little bit of encouragement or, or just understanding where people are in the courses. I found that it was really helpful just getting to talk about who's taking which courses in what order and things like that. So some of us like evenings, some of us need weekends. I think starting off would be just great.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
I'd be interested. I know that the firm I'm at, we use a lot of Microsoft Teams for communication. I mean, if that's a resource that may be easily used for this, I'm unsure. Just kind of thought about that.
Yep. Well, thank you, Jacob. The, one of the, we could use Teams or we could use, we could use Zoom. Some of the reasons that we use Zoom in the studios, it's often easier to draw on student work. The annotation tools seem to be a little bit stronger in Zoom, but there's, there's, there is certainly a faction at our university would, which would prefer people to use Teams. And all of you, because you're AU students, you'd probably have to log in through your Athabasca account. And that's actually one thing I should mention. Very important when you're corresponding and sharing things with us is to use your Athabasca account because that helps access to things like Teams. But the Zoom one is also easy for us to do. We probably will look into this and see what, what's the best way to do it. And then we'll probably maybe add to our welcome letters that everybody gets when they start a course to say, you know, if you want to log in and see who's there, then that, that's one way to do it as well. Any other thoughts on that one?
I'll just chime in to say, like, while I've been here in South Africa, I've, the Zoom, I know, I'm not as familiar with Teams because I haven't used it as much, but like I've had student meetings while I've been here with, with students on Zoom. And it also allows people, if they happen to be in an area or traveling or something where they don't have as much bandwidth, they can, you can easily just call in and you can still join without, without video or Wi-Fi. You can just call into the Zoom account as well, which, so it makes, it makes access for, because I know we have students in lots of countries, and not all those countries necessarily have the same level of bandwidth. So internationally, I've had really good luck with, with Zoom as well.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed tonight somebody has dialed in as well. So it certainly is possible. And so we can, let us look into this and, and get something set up and see. We can start by maybe building on the virtual lounge that Henry created and then see if we need to create other accounts because if it gets too busy, for example.
Maybe for privacy reasons to if different people working on different things, one Zoom would be hard to deal with. But in Zoom, you can create like breakout rooms where you can have smaller groups within the one group. So maybe also that would help.
Okay. That's a, that's a good point. And Nicole has reminded us that with our AU email addresses, we all actually do have Teams accounts, so we can do that, too. Okay. All right. Do any more questions on that one or shall we, or other questions that people would like to ask?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jesse. I'm a first year, just started this year, and I'm thinking down the road for when I'll be applying for master's programs. My specific question is in regards to asking institutions about their programs and whether or not this qualification would be appropriate for the institution. Does that, does that make sense?
I, um, perhaps the best way to answer that is to turn to Brendan and Salam and ask them a little bit about how, how our courses, our, our program prepared them for getting into master's programs in, in Germany or in Calgary.
I guess I'll, yeah, I can answer. With, with the University of Calgary, due to the lack of accreditation, their foundation year, which had, was required to take. So that's why the master's I was, I'm taking is three years instead of two. However, like, there's been so many courses waived throughout this, which isn't really, yeah. So I've had a lot of courses waived due to, due to the, the stuff I took at Athabasca. And honestly, I can say like, some of the courses, I feel like especially the Structures courses, like, I was like, really like nervous because I'm not very good at structures and the mathematics. But when it came to like the master's program, even with the, the high, the advanced structures course I'm in right now, I feel like the undergraduate prepared, prepared me for it extremely well. And yeah, there's, there's so many courses there that like, I feel like I'm an upperhand in a lot of individuals just because of the, like, the depth of the courses at Athabasca, so.
Thank you, Brendan. Salam, Salam, what was your experience?
Yeah, so, yeah, after I graduated from the Bachelor Program, I applied to Germany. And the reason was that I missed the deadlines for the Canadian ones. And so for Canadian ones, there's eight accredited schools in the country where you can just get your masters and then get your, so like after accreditation of your masters, you become an intern architect, and then you be, you can log in hours, and then you can do your exams later on. But my path, that since I'm going to Germany, when I come back, I have to do certification for my education. And I have to like build all my papers, all my courses I took there, and then apply and see. But I know that other people went already to the school I'm going to. And I know that it's already in the system, so that might make it a little bit easier. So in my school, it's a two-year program for semesters. And the first three semesters, you have different courses, including studio. You have these theories, you have German. We learned a little bit German, not that I know German at all, but and then there's, okay, theories. We have also two electives. You choose two different electives. But what they do for us, they give us a list of thirteen, fourteen electives, and you're free to decide which electives you want to do. Same with studios. They give us nine, ten different studios, and you choose which one you want to go. Like, some of them are run by German architects, some of them with international architects and different things. Some are generative designs, some are robotic designs, some are water architecture, some are landscape architecture. So they varies, and that giving the options for different things is really great. In your third semester, you start your thesis, basically, and it's a research document. And in your fourth semester, it's only thesis, so there is no other courses. So you just do the design for your researched thesis that you started in your third semester. So like now I will start my design process for whatever I research for. So yeah, it's a different timing for the schedule of how the school goes. But yeah, once I finish, I have to create a little portfolio and collect all the different course syllabus and then come back and apply to the C A C B board. I hope that helps a little bit.
No, that's, that's very helpful. I'm, sadly, I'm going to, it's, it's even more complicated than Brendan and Salam have mentioned because right across the country, there's different kinds of architecture programs, even amongst the accredited ones. So for example, and each one has different requirements. So I don't want to mislead anybody, but Ryerson, for example, will only accept into their master's program people who have completed an undergraduate degree at an accredited school of architecture in Canada. So, and just to make it even more complicated, in some cases, the master's program is accredited. And in other cases, it's the undergraduate and the masters that are accredited. So, for example, just to show you how complicated this is, if you do your undergrad at the University of Toronto. Or the University of Calgary, because there you're actually doing a Bachelor of Fine Arts with a major in architecture. Ryerson will not let you into their master's program, even though UC and UFT both have accredited master's program. Their undergrad isn't accredited, therefore Ryerson won't let you in. Now, Ryerson, I believe, is one of the few that has that rule. And we're talking to them right now about maybe loosening up a bit, because I think they're going to be missing some great students unless they do. But if you have to choose your undergraduate program carefully, and in many cases, though. So you may be asked to do a foundation year. And a foundation year is an extra year of study that is asked some, you know, places like McGill have a foundation year. So if you went to the University of Toronto and applied to McGill, they would ask you to do a foundation year, just as they've asked Brendan. To do a foundation year at the University of Calgary. We think, and given what Brendan has said about waiving courses, we think that may be unnecessary. But until we're accredited, we're going to continue to get that pushback. Now, I apologize, that sounds awfully complex, but does anybody have any questions about about any of that stuff?
Well, Douglas, I wanted to add that today we got an email from Nicholas Lumerer. Who was a student who got into a Masters of Architecture this year. He entered the Lawrence Techno- Technological University in the US, where he's, he's applied and got accepted. And they are offering him the path into their MARC Path Two, which is the same as if you did. A Bachelor of Science in Architecture at their university, so he has no foundation year. And entering directly into the two-year program. So just to add to that, I think different universities. Will consider your degree differently, some will say two years, some will say three years, some will say no. But I think at this, at this moment, it's, it's a very. Complex kind of path in that sense.
I'm going to the United States is an option and in, I'm, I should have, I I wanted to share this one with you. Just, it's, it's just a slide that shows what the programs are in the United States and how much they cost. So you, Henry, you said that Nicholas was accepted into Lawrence Tech?
That's right.
Yeah, so there's four online programs that are are accredited in the United States. Now, because of our reciprocity agreement between Canada and the United States. These are almost accepted by the CACB as if they were a Canadian school. It's much easier, the the Ameri- moving from the American system to the Canadian is actually much easier. These are all either largely totally online or largely online. So Southern Illinois and Lawrence Technical, San Francisco Art and Architecture Academy and the Boston Architectural College. Boston Architectural College is actually accepting people from Canada. Who have an architectural technology diploma from places like George Brown or St. Clair College. They are accepting them directly into their Masters of Architecture program. But the one thing about it is you can see that the American programs are quite expensive. And in some cases, Boston Architectural actually requires a low residency that you have to go there for two weeks, I think, every semester. The other ones, it's, it's different, so if you're interested in one of those, make sure you check into them to see what's going on. I'll stop sharing again. So probably we've, we've hopelessly confused everybody now, but if you have questions that we can help clarify any of this, please, please feel free to shout them out.
I'll ask a follow-up if you don't mind. I, so I'm originally from New Zealand and I'm planning to do my masters in New Zealand, possible. Do you have any advice on how I can approach a university about this? Like, how, how could I word it, like, this is the degree that I'm doing in three or four years down the track? Do you think this will be an acceptable degree? You know, is there a way to do that?
Well, um, yes, every, every school of architecture has an admissions department. And so target, but every school of architecture is different. So there's probably Auckland and Wellington in New Zealand.
That's right, yeah.
And I, I, I think they both have architecture programs, I would approach them both and say, look, this is what I'm doing. Will this be the equivalent of an undergrad to get me into a masters at one of those universities? And you might get two radically different answers from from them, because they're, everybody's different. But I would do that soon, because, you know, you don't want to take a program and find out that it it's not going to be helpful.
Okay, thanks for that, perfect.
I have a question here for Brendan and Salam, I know I've talked with Salam before because we used to work together. Hi, Salam, nice, nice to see you. I I was looking down the road as well as a master's degree and I was curious as to, I know that when you're applying for a lot of them, if not all of them. That you need to provide like a portfolio of your, your work and all that. I was just looking to see any advice and working on that and kind of building that up, just thinking about it now, couple of years on the road versus. Down the road is exactly what it, what to provide and kind of, is there anything to think about now before I start?
Yeah, so I can start with this, I know Brendan has created a great portfolio after Athabasca University. And he applied to a Calgary university, it was great. So for me, what I did back then was like, yeah, I had different projects. And I worked on the visualization of each project, but starting from conceptualization. All the way till the end, so how did the project start? The buildup of different elements of the project, why did it end up like that? So like you have to have a knowledge why you're doing certain things in your project and how you're doing it. So now, later on, now I'm learning more about how to, your portfolio should have an artistic touch to it. That the minute they open the portfolio, they say, I want to see more of it. So I did watch different portfolio sessions and I'm working on my current portfolio now. So some of them suggest that you start with your big fish at the beginning to grab the attention of people looking at your portfolio. Then you can do like different projects and show different things. But it's not only about the visualization of your project, it's not like the render, but it's the process of the design of how you show. So make sure when you design things to have documentation for every process you've done along the path with everything. And write the description of your project once you do it, because later on, it's hard to go back and remember what was the thinking process with that. So it helps you save you time with after that. And, yeah, look at different portfolios before you start building yours, I think it helps you with the layout. And I think the key is simplicity of the layout, it's not about looking crowded and overloaded with things. But simplicity and getting to the point, that's what I learned so far.
Thank you, Salam. Brendan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, like, I echo what she says, for sure, there are definitely more smart artistic qualities to work. Yeah, I'm not sure what, each, each school probably looks for different things. But, yeah, a good diverse kind of drawings is probably is beneficial, like site plans, diagrams, renders. Like, probably want a good breadth of things in there. And then, yeah, pay attention to details as well, like, you don't want to, like, you don't want to spend a whole bunch of time on stuff and then not pay attention to line weights. And then it looks, looks bad when you, it gets printed out, or sorry, copied to PDF. Like, I find with Illustrator, I like to. Kind of export as JPGs, because often when you export straight from Illustrator, all the line weights get a bit messed up or they don't look as you envisioned. But those are just like de- details and stuff like that. I would just say, yeah, start to start conceptualization of the project and then kind of tell the story of the project through it. And, yeah, pay attention to details and start early, you don't want to be working on your portfolio. Last minute, like a day before, it's due for submission and be all stressed out. Yeah, but that, that, that's my advice, I guess.
Oh, thanks, that's great, that's very helpful, I'm just thinking down the road, obviously, just to not be having to backtrack and say, okay, what was I thinking? So, thank you, that's very helpful.
Sorry, maybe have a variety of projects, even if you had like personal projects, don't be afraid to add them in your portfolio. They make it richer, actually.
And Jacob, as well, we've, we've got on our YouTube channel a number of resources about portfolios. We did a two-part workshop, the first part was about what people are looking for in a portfolio. And the second part was a number of students from around the world presented their portfolios and shared them and got some feedback. And then the third piece, Brendan actually talked about his own portfolio, so on our YouTube channel, you can find all of these videos. And you'll probably be absolutely sick of portfolios by the time you've watched them all, but you're absolutely right. Everybody should be thinking about their portfolio from the moment they enter the program. And I say that because even hand drawing, the people would still like to see, can this person draw in sketch by hand? So developing your skills in that area is very important. Building things, if you build physical models and you're very good at it, include some shots of that. Because basically what's happened in the world is everything has become so digital. That now hand drawings and physically built models are the exception rather than the rules, so they help your portfolio stand, stand out.
Um, but thanks, guys, that's, that's awesome, I'll definitely be checking a lot out, thank you so much.
And and I just wanted to say as well, I really encourage students to use the collections. In like the the courses that I teach and I'm, you know, I always give the students feedback on their, their graphic layout and so on. Of just use those as opportunities of different ways to like, you know, combine images together. Practice how, you know, annotating images. Laying out pages, bringing, trying new graphic ideas to get feedback. If you look in the student gallery, you'll see that, you know, there's students who have done just some really spectacular collections. And and it's really, it's a skill that, you know, and it gives, the collections give you an opportunity to just practice it and practice the different elements.
Thank you, Kristen, that's an important point, we do try to let people understand that everything you do is. The impact of everything you do is dependent on its presentation, not surprisingly. So what typefaces you use, how you arrange elements on the page, all of these things are important. And as Kristen points out, we, we give you lots of practice by using the concept of a collection. So that everything that you submit should be thoughtfully designed. Um, other questions, and any questions, a good one.
Douglas, there's a couple of questions in the chat box, if you want to check that.
Okay, just having a look, let me. Lots of things going on in the chat box, sorry, let me, let me go down to the, to the end here. Okay. Okay, I'm applying for, to a few MARCH programs in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Intake and would be interested in participating in Portfolio Peer Review Group. That's not a bad idea at all, if we, if we could, you know, we'd be happy to participate. We did a portfolio kind of session and we, I think we could do it again. Okay, on the questions of collections, how long does it normally take to receive a mark? That's a very good question, we do have service standards and they are along the lines of eight business days. After you submit a project to be marked or a collection to be marked. You should get your feedback and your mark from your academic expert or your instructors, okay? So eight business days, so that doesn't include weekends. The, we have to ask you to bear with us, so sometimes, because we all know that this happens. A lot of, all of the contracts end at the end of the month. So I was enjoying my Christmas break and then on December the, the thirty-first, all sorts of assignments landed in my inbox. So we do try and do it as as quickly as possible, but if if something's really taking a long time, let us know and there could be a mix up, okay? Sometimes that happens, we are trying to look at an eight-day turnaround time. It should be for questions, it should be a two-day turnaround time, we usually try to get back to everybody as quickly as we can. And let me just see if there's other questions here. Okay, is there a policy regarding having materials available in the AU library for assignments? Well, yes, there are certain materials which are in the digital reading room and they should be available to everyone. If they're not, let me know, because I want to know immediately. And the other aspect, of course, is that when you start your course, you should get a package of course materials or links to the e-text. We're trying to move away from physical packages, we're actually trying to move away from textbooks as we develop new, new programs. And so we could base them all totally on open educational resources, which will make it easier for everybody. Okay. Ah, Ben, they're coming in fast and furious, as a new question, I was, as a new student, I was curious about. To know what programs other students use for designing and refining their projects, does AU pay for any of these programs? Let me just tell you a little bit about that. It's the, in the first two studios, ADST two hundred and two oh five, we actually ask you not to use computer. Hardware, or not to use computer programs, we want you to develop your hand drawing and your, your hand modeling skills. After that, it is possible to do a lot of things, but after you take the first studio, I actually recommend that you take. APST two fifteen graphic representation, because that will enhance your graphic skills and take you to the next level. We also now have a CAD course, APST two five five, in which you learn SketchUp, AutoCAD, Revit. And you're also encouraged to learn other programs like Enscape. Now, all of those programs, we try to make sure that all of them are freely available, so you can download them. So if you are an Athabasca student with a student number and an email address. You can go to the AutoCAD, the Autodesk site and get AutoCAD and Revit and the other programs as well. SketchUp is getting, it used to be totally free, now it's a little bit less, you have to, can only get the web-based version for free. But then there's other programs for rendering like Enscape, and so all of those are available. And one of the best ways to learn about them is to take the CAD course, APST two five five. But you shouldn't, we try to avoid you having to pay for any of them as long as it's for student use. Okay, so, man, it's jumping all over the place. So the BSC in Architecture from Athabasca University is not enough to get the certification from CACB. No, that's one of, if you have the syllabus diploma, the REIC syllabus diploma. It is enough to get certified at the CACB, but they don't certify any other programs in Canada. For, in in that same way, the syllabus is very unique in that respect. Okay. Yes, how are we handling the COVID order to do desk study rather than site visits? We would waive the need to do a site visit, the last thing we want anybody to do is endanger their health. So we, we ask you to do a kind of a virtual site visit, I know in APST two thirty and some of those courses, they ask you to visit a building site. If you can do it virtually, that is absolutely acceptable and fine. Okay, let me see, I will, man, it's coming in fast and furious. Okay, does anybody follow the degree works for their courses? Degree works, actually, I'm going to turn to Carolyn Laura, can you give us just a little bit of insight on to. Degree works and how it might work for a student?
Hi, yeah, I can speak to that. The worksheet that you have access to, when, once you become a student or shortly after you become a student. It should be followed right through the duration of your program. If anyone notices anything on there, though, that doesn't sound or look right, please let me know and I can look into it. But it is something that should be current and up to date and and something that you can follow while you're completing your, your degree.
Okay, and how would they access it, Laura? I mean.
There's a link to it through your MyAU Student Portal, it's under the Manager Program heading. Once you get in there, they'll. Um, it's under the Manager Program heading. Once you get in there, there'll be a link to Degree Works. So just go in through your MyAU Student Portal.
Okay, thank you. And so here's a question that just came in and it's an important one. My understanding is the BSC Arch is a more comprehensive course load than the syllabus. Is it possible to get the syllabus designation while taking the BSC program? That's a very interesting question. So you're absolutely right. Syllabus students take a subset of the courses that you take in the BSC Arch. Okay, so they don't take as many courses, but they have to, at the same time, be accumulating 9,800 hours of experience under the supervision of a licensed Canadian architect. So yes, they have a reduced course load. And yes, you can take, you can be part of the syllabus, but with the syllabus, you actually register with the RAIC. So you become this, RAIC runs the syllabus program. We just provide the academic courses. The RAIC provides the studios, which are usually in face-to-face mode in major cities across Canada. But right now, they're all, they've all gone online. So you can do the syllabus, but you have to be working for a licensed Canadian architect while doing it. But you can also get, if you want to, you can also get the Bachelor of Science of Architecture. And let's see. The new international collaboration is exciting. Has AU ever considered joining UArctic? If not, could you please look into it as a student of Far North? It would be mean a lot. I don't know much about the University of the Arctic, but I will, I'll see. Certainly, you know, a lot of students around the world come to Athabasca to take one or two courses to supplement the program they're doing at their own university. And a lot of people do that, even in architecture. We have a lot of students who are not program students, but rather they, they just have to take a math course or they have to take a history course, so they take it with us. Um, oh, yes, here's one of my personal things that I hate, the cost of the Adobe suite. Nothing offends me more than the way that Adobe is, is, is treating students in this respect. I believe that you have to pay something like $22 a month to get the Creative Suite, the Creative Cloud from Adobe. But you have to pay for a full year of, 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 of subscription. And that can be very bad if you only need it for six months. So we don't specify Adobe products, but rather you might want to check out GIMP, for example, and other, and Inkscape are free versions of, that are very similar to the Adobe products. So it all depends on whether you think it's worthwhile or not. I'm not even, if you can get along with GIMP or with Inkscape, you might find that those free versions are very, very good. And let's see what else we have. Okay. Oh, are the architects' hours paid during the syllabus? Yes. In fact, if, no matter what you're doing for an architect, if they're not paying you, that's kind of against the law. And so we, it used to be, there was a lot of, you were asked to do internships for free in various ways. But if you're in a co-op program like Waterloo runs, so you're a student, you, you have a term, which is a co-op term, you go to work for an architect, they do have to pay you. And if you're not being paid, then that's, that's illegal. So you should get paid. And, and Laura, okay, lots of discussion about Adobe. Yes, we could go, you'd probably do a whole session on Adobe and, and what it means. Okay, I'm just seeing what other questions we have here.
Douglas, I can help you scroll the, the chat.
Okay, all right.
So you don't have to come back. So there's one that you missed. It's, it's from Jelisa. What type of careers are available for those who don't continue on to a master's program?
That's a great question, because you know, and this is important to understand, even though you might go through the entire process of becoming an architect, you'd be surprised at the places that your career takes you. And I think all of us could share examples of exactly that. For example, I, I started working in computer graphics. And I then did a degree in computer science. And then I got offered a job for, with an architect in Los Angeles. And I moved down there and was doing both computer stuff, CAD stuff, and got licensed down there. And so that's where my, my license is at, at the moment. But from there, I found it very exciting to be in, in research. So I got involved with virtual reality and all sorts of different kinds of research projects. The other thing, though, that architects do extremely well is that you can, if you can manage a building project, you can manage anything. And that's really important. I'm also going to try, I created it, I, oh, as a matter of fact, I think it's in our, I'm just going to check quickly. If you download, if you go to the, our website again, then I'm just going to check quickly. I did a labor market analysis under our publication section and it actually has an occupation tree in there that might be of interest to you. I'm just trying to make sure.
I just posted the link to that, Douglas, actually, in the chat.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so on page three of that, the employment and educational opportunities. I'll quickly, I'll quickly just share the screen, because this is a very good question. And you can see, it's probably a little small, but you know, if you get your Bachelor of Science in Architecture, and I base this on basically what has happened to me and to others, you can work in computer aided design, you can work in management, you can work in different kinds of design fields and even things like building preservation, which David Murray is one of our leading experts on that. And then you could see how there's all sorts of opportunities. So it's not a bad, it's not a bad undergraduate degree to have at all. Because through management, design and planning, there's all sorts of opportunities. So again, that's there for you to download as well and, and check out. And even it shows you some of the other educational options that you can pursue. Okay, Henry, what have we got next?
So there was an earlier question that was really early on, we kind of missed from Fatima. She says, I just want to know the step after finishing the bachelor degree. How do I become a licensed architect in any other country such as Saudi Arabia? Or come, or should I, should I complete a master's study? She, she wants to know what, I guess it's similar to the, the question from New Zealand.
Yeah, and again, there is something called the Canberra Accord, where a bunch of nations got together to basically say, okay, we'll accept your graduates if you'll accept ours. Now, I'm not sure if Saudi Arabia is a signature to, signatory to that accord, but it's worth finding out. And basically, you know, every country is a little bit different. So it's really important that you check first before you go too far down any one path. So I don't know about particular countries, but you, it's not a bad thing to sort of check out. There is an interesting question here. Okay, what, what is the typical intern pay at an architect office? Now, I'm going to turn that back to you, to some of you who are working in architects' offices. Does anybody have an idea?
Actually, I can share a good resource that the University of Waterloo has put together. And it ranges between 15 to $25 an hour, but there's a lot of variation within that range. I'll post it in the chat.
Thank you, Shane. And it also, you, you want to check too, because this still goes on. You may be paid a base salary and, but be expected to work. If you were working on a competition, for example, you may be expected to log your time and not get paid for it. So it's good to know in advance. I don't think that's a great practice, but I understand that still goes on. And, okay, so here's one. I have 10 years of experience with registered architects here in Canada. Can I still be part of the BSC Arch from AU and transferred to the RAIC syllabus program? Well, that's a, the, certainly all of, let me see. It depends. I'm sorry, this is not, you know, like the answer to that. The work experience pro, the work experience component of the RAIC syllabus does maybe stale dated. So it's, you should check with them to see how far back you can go with your experience. Because you have to fill out experience record books where an architect signs off on what you did for them during the time that you were employed. Whether the RAIC will let you go back 10 years, I can't really say. But you are welcome to be part of our Bachelor of Science in Architecture and transfer, you can transfer many, many of the courses over to the syllabus. Except you can't transfer our virtual studios. This is a bone of some contention between us, as they will not, we accept their face-to-face studios as the equivalent of ours. And indeed, they're, they're almost identical. But they do not accept our virtual studios as the equivalent of theirs. Now, having said that, if you do have 10 years of experience, you can submit a portfolio and get advanced standing in the studios, but only for the first four studios, up to the first four. After that, they want you to be, to be, to, to do their studios. At the same time, just so you know, let's see, they, they have levels in their studio, in their syllabus program. So during Level 1, you don't actually have to be working for a licensed Canadian architect. But before you can get into Level 2, you do have to be working for a licensed Canadian architect. And that's when you can start to accumulate all of your hours, although you can do that in Level 1, too. So it's a little bit complicated. And sadly, if you lose your job or your employment after you do have a certain grace period to find another job, but you may be asked to leave the syllabus if you're not still working for a Canadian architect.
Uh, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me. My name is Brandon. My mic sort of is kind of weird. It might be a little bit quiet. I'm not sure. But I just wanted to say that whole process sounds a lot similar to the apprenticeship and like trades system, the way it works in Alberta. I'm a journeyman welder and when you're an apprentice, you have to have your apprenticeship booklet signed by a certified journeyman. Whoever signs your blue book basically is telling the school in your blue book, like this employee worked this many hours and these are the kinds of things they did for me before you can go on to your next year of trade school.
Yes, Brendan, you're absolutely right. It is, in fact, the syllabus is sort of based on the apprenticeship idea. And so it's for those who are already working for a Canadian architect, yes, that makes, it makes a great deal of sense. And so what you do, what you do in that particular instance is you submit your credentials, you apply to the syllabus program and you do have to pay an entry fee. And then oftentimes, the, if you've got prior education, it'll come to me, actually, because I review all of them to assess them, what advanced standing they will get. And so I try to be as generous as I can. Some people will doubt that, but I do. So it is, it is, it is sort of complicated, to tell you the truth. Here's a, here's one. I am working for an engineering company as a structural drafter who wants to become an architect. And so I'm wondering if I can be accepted for the syllabus program. If yes, how and if no, why not? Well, that is a very interesting question. It's been debated back and forth whether it has to be an architecture firm you work for or whether related fields such as engineering or government work as well would be acceptable. I'm sorry to say that that's a question that only the RAIC could answer. And if they say no, it's because there's very specific training that they want to see in those experience hours. And it may be that you can't get them as a structural drafter.
Okay, because I use, we use Revit for all of our projects, though, and like AutoCAD, which is kind of like the main software in architecture. So I'm like, I'm not sure.
Well, the, the 9,800 hours that I spoke of earlier is divided into categories. So you have to have so many design hours, so many contract management hours, so many site supervision hours, and even some administrative hours. So that's where the, the differences may be.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Yes. You're, somebody has noted that they're a BSC Art student and a syllabus student in Part 1 Studies. And due to COVID-19, I found it difficult to find a placement in a firm. Do you have any advice? It is going to be difficult. I'm sorry. I mean, this is not a, this is not the greatest time and it's difficult to find work. But again, the, you know, your portfolio is a critical, critical piece of finding work. So if, if you're out of work, working on your portfolio is not a bad thing to do. And to, we also, I was, I was looking at some various surveys that were done. This was done a few years ago about what employers were looking for. And certainly BIM, Building Information Modeling, was, was one of those things that people were very concerned about or looked for in a graduate. So being able to do Revit, for example, is a very good skill to have, because a lot of firms are moving this direction. But also, if you, if you can do super renderings in things like Enscape or other pieces of software and you've got a great portfolio, people will still want to talk to you and, and look at your work. And Shane's posted the, the wage guidelines and David Murray, oh. Now, David has raised a very interesting question or point. It says, stage two syllabus hours will be used towards the 3,720 hours required as an intern architect. So let me just expand on that. After you've got your, as, and sometimes while you're doing your degree, let's say we're talking masters here, an accredited masters program. You may be working, or when you graduate, before you can become a licensed architect, you have to do fore-exams and complete 3,720 hours of work experience under a licensed Canadian architect. Now, in some provinces, if you're in the syllabus, that, that 3,720 hours will be included, can be included in your 9,800 hours. In other provinces, though, David, do you know if that's right across the entire country? Because there were some provinces that were still balking about accepting those syllabus hours as the equivalent of the 3,720.
I only know Alberta, so I'm not too sure about the other provinces.
Yeah, so we did a study a while back and found most of them did accept the hours, but some of them didn't. So you know, this is, if there's one message today, check. Don't accept anything we're telling you at face value. Check with the university or the provincial association that you want to work for. That's, so that's a really good piece of advice.
The other thing I could mention is that I think it's 720 hours, something like that, that you acquire as a master's student after you've completed a certain number of credits can be, can count towards your intern hours as well. So there is some advantage to, to the, the experience you can get while you are a master's degree student. Say your summer job, for instance.
Yeah, David's absolutely right. You can start to accumulate some hours while you're still in a master's program. I don't think you can accumulate any when you're in an undergraduate program. But when you're in the masters, again, according to the province, though, you can accumulate some. Okay. Henry, have I missed anything else?
No, I think we're, we're good in the questions.
Okay.
So if there's any new questions, feel free to add.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about our courses? I mean, we've talked a lot about studio and becoming an architect. Anybody have any, anything to ask about courses? I actually have a question, which is this. Tomorrow morning, I'm in a, actually it was just announced that the Alberta government is prepared to fund the development of micro credentials. And tomorrow morning, I'm in a meeting about whether there could be some micro credentials developed in architecture. Things immediately spring to mind about, say, building codes. Building codes is a difficult part and many students fail the building code exam. So that's one thing. Building information is another one. Regenerative design, accessible and universal inclusive design. But from those, particularly those who are working or even those who are studying, is there, and, and people, and I'll ask David and Shane and everybody else to, to weigh in. Is there micro credentials that would be valuable to people? Okay. Well, let me, let me phrase that another, another way. Oh, energy efficiency. Well, let me, let me phrase that another, another way. Oh, energy efficiency. That's a good one. Yeah, okay. What do people think about building information modeling?
I was gonna say like BIM, building code, N E C B, I think those are all kind of more complicated ones that could be easily done there.
Okay. Somebody wrote, I work for a builder and BIM and energy is up there. Okay. All right. Yeah, we'd also like to engage both industry and David also, if the Alberta Association of Architects has any kind of wants to partner with some micro credentials, it could be a really interesting idea.
I'm not sure if this would be considered, but also if there is side visits. Because architects learn more from side visits when they go see how things get together. I think that could help also with the knowledge.
That's an interesting one, Solon. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. Yes. And in fact, the point of the micro credentials is they could be stacked, in other words, put together to build up towards a degree. And universal design and accessibility. Okay, those are good ones. Okay.
Wondering if Brendan's able to give us a list of the courses that were waived in his master's program. It would be nice to have a micro credential that focuses on courses that you may get credit for, or you will not have to take once you go into the masters.
That's a good point. Yeah. Brendan, if you wouldn't mind sending that to us, we can share that with everybody. We don't want to put you on the spot right now. But if you could share it with us, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to, I've read exactly ones that they gave me credit for. And I will, soon as I'm done this, I'll, I'll, I'll check it out and I'll send you guys later tonight or tomorrow.
Now, there, there's a couple of courses or questions that have come in about specific courses. And, and this one is about, is there an alternative course in place of Math 215 to complete the Bachelor of Science Architecture degree? I, I have been known to accept other courses. It is, it is unfortunate. I would love to have a better kind of math courses for, that are more specifically focused on the kind of math that you need to do in order to be an architect. We're not the greatest mathematicians. And that's why, though, we also provide some of the in the publication sections, we provide some basic math skills, but the, we do need to sadly, though, we need to make sure that the quality of any alternative course is as same and as rigorous as Math 215. But we do accept, and some students have done this, because some of the courses that are, are taught virtually online as Math 215 is. They find that it's easier for them to take an equivalent course in a bricks and mortar face-to-face environment. Sometimes that just works for people. And we do try and accept those things, but check with us first to make sure that what you're going to take is going to get you what you think it is. Because otherwise, you might find yourself taking the course and we say, I'm sorry, this just isn't the equivalent. But we do, we do try and, and look at that. It's, it's, I wish we had better. I wish we had math courses that were tailored for the architecture program. But that's not going to change until we can get some other things happening. There is another question about APS, or Arch 230? Arch 230? Or A P S T 230?
I think it was A P, A P S T 230?
Okay, all right. That's the materials and methods course and it's, what, what, do we have an exemplary submitted examples? We can check on that. I don't think we do at the moment, but when we do, we can post those to our, our gallery as well.
If I may add to micro credentials as well. Like architecture, architectural prototyping, including like 3D printing and, I don't know, robotics and these things. Also different new technologies in the industry.
Great idea. Okay. Okay. So the, Brent was asking about the history courses. But in, in terms of exemplary work for that, if you follow the collections link in, that's in every course, you can see examples of high-quality collections. And that's, that's the standard that, you know, is the, what we're looking for. So a number of students did beautiful pieces and they, you should be able to see those. And that's, that's what we're looking for in terms of exemplary work.
The student gallery is a really good place for looking at those collections as well.
Yes. And in the collections link, let me, let me just tell you where it is because it's in every, each and every course. Okay. It's going to take me a second to find it, but I will. So you know, every course is pretty well set up the same way. So let's go into. Okay. All right, let's, let's do, I know a lot of people are interested in Arc 330. So let's go in there and I'm going to share my screen. Okay, this is going to be a test to see if I can find it. That's. Yeah. So here I am on the homepage, right? I've scrolled down here to creating your personal archive. I go to click on archives and collections. It opens up a document. And in that document, I'm gonna, I'll stop sharing. Let me see if I can do this because it, it does load it as a Yeah. And I'm gonna, I'll pull this up if I'm gonna see if I can do this. Okay. Okay, now I'm, I'm gonna stop my sharing and share a different kind of document. And there we are. Okay. So this is a, this is a, a piece submitted as a collection on the ancient city of, of London. And you can see how the student has laid it out. And there's a couple of things that are important. You know, very handsome graphics. And with the right amount of materials, everything properly annotated with quotes you can see here. And everything also referenced and cited properly, including the images. So this is an exemplary collection. Okay. Hopefully that, that helps a little bit, but you can link to those. You can find them in the, the personal archives and collections document that's part of every course. So I hope that helps. And let's see what else we got here. Anybody can access the collections? Yes, anybody can access the collections. How do you access the collections again? Okay, just, that's, all you have to do is go to the homepage of your course. And scroll down on the homepage until you get to creating your personal archive. And then click on the archives and collections link. Okay. And thank you, Brendan. I, maybe you've left, but Brendan has kindly agreed to answer any questions. And check out his portfolio if you want to see the kind of portfolio that gets you into an architecture school. It's posted in the, in our YouTube video. And thank you, David, for, for, for attending as well. I know we're getting, I know we've got a little bit overtime. I'm happy to answer questions as long as people have them. And since we're recording this, we can share this with, with things as well. Does anybody though have any, I'll stop sharing and ask any other questions before? Okay, just trying to see if I've missed any. Henry, is there anything in particular that I might have missed?
No, I, I think we're good. Someone is asking how often the materials are updated for the collections. I guess after every end of semester.
Yeah. We try and update things as required. So one of the problems, of course, with online learning, particularly when it's, it's heavily very digital, is that we want to provide links to things and sometimes they get broken. And we don't always know that they're broken. So notify your tutor, your academic expert and your coordinator so that we know, and then we'll try and fix them as quickly as we can. Can you choose not to add your project to the collections? We ask as part of the studios for every student to submit two images to the gallery. And that's actually part of the, the assignment. We don't make it mandatory, though, in other courses. So if you, if, we may ask you, though, if we come across something that's particularly good, we may ask if we can put it into the gallery, but we wouldn't force you. But we do ask for two images for the gallery. And the reason for that is, as we move towards accreditation, we need to compile a whole set of examples of the work. And so we encourage you to submit to the gallery. There was a question about tutors. It would be nice to know too, if there are students that have passed the math course that provide tutor services for math. That is a good question. I don't know. Maybe again, once we can get dialogues going, some can help others.
Douglas, could I just share my screen quickly?
Please.
Well, in response to the, the collection, just again, to give students an idea, this is one that that a student did out on a project for, for the first assignment for Arch 330. And I'll just, I'll just scroll through it here. It's, it's a pump house in Arch 330, as many of you'll know, as you select the building. It's the one course. And this was just a really nice example of how, and, and as you can see, it's an old pump structure that has been sort of taken over by the local graffiti community. And so just to give another example of, you know, of some really outstanding work. And how, you know, a different way, a different way to lay, lay these collections out. And, and you can see this was just really artistically done and then again, with, with references and so on, and at the end, just as a another example of, of, you know, how to sort of break out of the box of, of what is, you know, what is a case study? Because I have a lot of students asking me what, what is a, what case study is okay to use and so on. And, and I try to be as broad as possible in, in, you know, embracing what students find is an interesting example.
Excellent. Well, thank you for sharing that. It is a very handsome example. So that'll give you a good idea of what we're looking for. Let's see, it looks, I think we've answered most of the questions. And, and does anybody have a final question before I let everybody go?
Because there was one comment that we missed. It's Brendan who says, I'm finding time hard to come by to complete my courses. It would be great, greatly helpful to have some more interactive learning available, working online without a teacher to further explain subjects can be tough to understand.
True. You're absolutely right. It is a, it is a difficulty with online learning because there's not, you know, there's, can't always be someone there and there's not even classrooms now. You can, of course, email us and, and through the Student Success Center get answers there. But then that is a little bit indirect, and I know exactly what you mean. Hopefully with the, the lounge that we, we're going to continue and upgrade, we'll, we'll be able to do some of those things. We also, you know, particularly the faculty members who all of whom have 1-800 numbers. We don't mind being bothered with, with questions. And with the faculty members, you can email us directly. And that, that can be very useful. And, and I'm always happy to answer questions as much as we can. In terms of, you know, we've talked about over the years, maybe even having office hours, and I wouldn't be opposed to that as well. It's difficult, though, when everybody's working in different time zones to find office hours that work. But I think, you know, we could try that as well. The, there's never going to be as much interactive classroom sort of style learning as would be at a bricks and mortar. That's just not part of it. But at the same time, because we give people six months to complete their courses, we give them some of the flexibility in there, which you can't really do in a bricks and mortar classroom environment. At the same time, you can, if you are getting towards the end of your contract, you can purchase an extension. They prefer to purchase extensions. Sometimes if there's extenuating circumstances, you can appeal and wait, get the fee waived. They're tightening down on that. I, I'm sorry to tell you that I used to be able to give extensions as I saw fit. And I often did see fit because I know how hard everybody's working. They're, they're tightening down on that though, however. So you have to be a little bit careful. But pay attention to your contract date. You have six months to complete things. And it's really good to talk to us before the end of your contract, if you think you're not going to make, be able to make the deadline. Oh, I'm sorry, somebody did point out their courses are four months contract. You're right. If you are getting financial aid, they ask you to do them in four months. If you're not getting financial aid, you have six months. That sadly is not enough basket policy. It's a financial aid policy. I'm sorry. I would prefer to give everybody six months. Okay. And
Can I just also jump in, Douglas, and, and just about the course content forum that we had going last year? And we sort of put it on hold over the holidays and because I've been out of the country and so the time zone is a bigger issue. But it was something that, that George Crawford and I started up with when students had raised concerns about issues around Eurocentrism in, in, in urban, in the urbanism course and around issues of racial diversity in courses and gender diversity and gender equity. We even had somebody come at one of the courses, you were there as well, Douglas, that brought up concerns about content of, of gender-related content in, in some of the links in one of the courses. So I'd be happy to start that up again when I get back. And we met once a month and we would just post it on Instagram when it, when it was going to happen. And because I think it's sort of an important dialogue to keep going. And Shane has, and I've been working on on new course content and actually changing the curriculum of, of Arch 330 to bring more gender and race diversity into the case studies that are presented in that course. So I wanted to let the students know that that was coming as well.
Yes, absolutely. And this is an important aspect. We're hoping that the global studio will also provide us with an opportunity to address these issues quickly and with some funding so that we may be co-creating content with students around the world, which is much more diverse. And so that's really important. It's our intent as well to put together a task force to examine not just Arch 330, but a number of the other courses as well, so that we can develop materials that do have a much more pluralistic approach to our architecture and design in, in every aspect. And so we would encourage people to be involved with that. And certainly we will try and keep going with the forum. And there's a lot of work we have to do here, but we are with, with the global studio. It's my hope that we can do this together.
Exactly.
Okay. I think we, things are, are quieting down in the, in the chat box unless anybody has a final question. Shall we, shall we, oh, I see that there is a hand up.
Evening, everyone. My name is Diana. I just have a quick question as it relates to timelines for exemptions. I know this has to do with the registry, but I've been waiting a very long time to understand if there will be any form of exemptions for me. And I've been trying to call the registry and sending emails and I'm not getting through to anyone. So I have a diploma in building and drafting technology, a degree in construction project management, and really wanted to do architectural. It was really my first choice as a child growing up. And, you know, life changes and you do other things, but then you kind of come back to what you really want to do. So I don't know, it's taken a long time. I was told by Linda to get my credentials assessed by Wes. I did that and I know that Wes has sent it to the school. And it's been months and I haven't started any course yet because I'm waiting for somebody to talk to me.
Okay. Um, I don't know the exact particulars, but we will get, we will track this one down. If you could send either me or Laura or both of us, the particulars of the situation, so we understand. We will follow up and find out what happened. we will follow up and find out what happened.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, I, I'm not aware of the situation at the moment, but
Is this L A R A M? That's?
Yes, you can, you can contact me at that email, and I can certainly look into what's taking so long. It shouldn't, it, we actually tried to rush those, those week reviews as soon as we get the documents from week. We tried to do those right away, so it shouldn't, I mean, it should be only taking about two weeks maximum since we received that, so let me look into that for you.
I can tell you the date when I, I can tell you the date when I receive it from Wes, January twenty eighth. And now we're in March, and I really wanted to start this course at the beginning of the year, and we are in March, and I haven't started any course.
Yeah, okay, and even, yeah, I can help you probably pick out a safe course to get started on too, before that's even done. But for sure, if you email me, I'll look in and check and see what, what the holdup is too.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We will look into that one for sure. And as I say, yes, okay, Chris, thank you very much. It's two thirty in Johannesburg, so thank you very much.
Say goodnight, and thanks to every, all the students and everybody to, for participating tonight. We've had a great turnout, and so, yes. I'll, I'll say goodnight from Joburg.
Okay, thank you, Chris, and then I hope you get home someday.
Exactly. Thanks.
And I think probably we could wrap it up at this point. This, this has been a great session for us. We're gonna try and do these on a regular basis now, so that people can attend and find questions. But we've got some great input today, and I really appreciate everybody staying with us and providing your thoughts and ideas. So again, thank you. Thank you to all of the tutors and to the faculty and to the staff and to our invited guests, Salam and Brendan. And thank you to the students as well. We know how busy everybody is, so it's very, it's, it's great that people are, are able to attend. And I hope everybody has a great evening. And again, please feel free, if your question wasn't answered today, reach out to us, because we'd be happy to help you. Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.